Good evening and welcome to Thursday, February eighth, twenty twenty four. The Citroplating Board meeting held in the Select One Hearing Room. The general public is welcome to attend it. We all know this job after two plus years. There's supposed to be genders, there's second.
Second.
Second, we find in our favor?
I.
I. First on the agenda, the community public hearing, side of review and special permit for density stormwater notching wood cuts. How are you pleased with that?
No. I mean. I'm Paul Seabird from Gray Consulting. I'm here along with the owner of Stephen. Since we met last in October, we've met with the Design Review Committee a couple of times now. And we've revised the plans in response to their comments. That revisions consist of revisions to the courtyard. It's now thirty feet wide consistently throughout. And it's three thousand one hundred forty seven square feet. Created in three thousand square feet required. We've also revised the configuration to be more of a perimeter walkway, if requested by the DSC. I mean, interior re- space. We've also relocated unit number one, shifted it closer to the parking area. It's requested by one of the board members last year. And it also makes it more centralized around the courtyard area. We've indicated on the plans where the trash and AC units will be. They're going to be located on the north side of each unit where there's no windows. It'll be approximately two point five feet by seven and a half feet long. On the landscape plan, we've identified all the existing trees and poser retain. Most of the majority have gone on the left-hand side. And there's three larger trees on the right-hand side, or the tribe retain. So we're not quite sure at this point, it's going to be easy to build or to structure. The grass pavilion with the fire access. That's actually been revised to be, we removed the grass pavilion units. The DSC didn't really like them, thought they might not work well in the courtyard area. Now we're proposing to keep a roadway base, four since a moment seen on top of that. And a geo grid reinforcement to support the fire truck. We're currently working on that design with the geo grid design specialists. So. We also propose site lighting. Site lighting consists of six-foot granite posts. And there's probably nine of them, two to the property line area. And seventy other sites, one in front of each unit. And a couple on the walkway entrance to pull it down. We've received the comments from the PR review consultant last week. We're working on adjusting those comments. Majority of them seem to be fairly minor, mostly stormwater operation maintenance comments. With some site additions which we've addressed. At this point, we'd be happy to turn over their questions to the board.
All right, so John has done a period of what you have all seen. What I would like to do is I'm going to go down the summary list. And we're going to take issues one by one. Hopefully, we're going to make some decisions tonight to steer the project, you know, in the right direction. The first one is five eighty point four density bulk stamp. So they're asking for a density bonus for one unit. So previously, the board discussed seventeen five for the density bonus. And that would be applied for pedestrian improvements in the green, green bush area. Is the board supportive of that still? So you don't think it's probable?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes. Okay. Landscaping. There's proposed trees for the main. It looks like it's going to be difficult to keep some of those trees that are there. I believe some of them are moe, moe maples, which are on your invasive list of species. Typically, on all the other projects, we ask for invasive species. And in our bylaw, it requires invasive species to be removed. What do you want to do with moe maples?
One out. We're all on the right-hand side. But it's behind you, fifty-one. Right on these.
These three. Yeah, the three larger trees in the back. Yeah.
That's on the walkway.
We actually behind the two minutes on the right.
But if it was the walkway.
Yes.
Right.
It's the thing one that had a lot of creatures regarding to foxes that were existing well. So they don't. Wouldn't be advisable to keep, but like Karen said, they're all moe maples.
But they're big trees.
Are they good shape?
There's a couple that might be, one is good. One would stay.
What would you propose to put here in place of that?
Probably like the native red maples. That's Acer grubrum, sunset. Something like that.
Something like that would be better. I mean, if you want, if you want, I mean, now's your time. If you want the invasive species gone, now's your time to have it gone.
Well, they're not in great shape anyways. We would, we guys think.
I think five, ten years down the road, we'd be happy with that change.
Looks like it'd be tough to build there.
Okay, so it'll be more than just maybe replaced up with sunset.
Yep, right.
Okay.
That's the landscape.
All right, so then the other thing that, to ensure the other trees on the other side remain, there should be some type of fencing at the drip line. So that the other trees on the other side stay. I mean, they've got to be physically cordoned off at the drip line. So that, so that the contractors don't go in and disturb there.
Okay, so you're talking dirt construction.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, sure.
So it needs to be on the plans.
And tree protection.
Tree protection on plans. Because you have water lines very, very close to there.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a board agreement that they went up, want to see. You've partied on other projects. I, I think that the trees, you know, ones and a couple of umbrella pines, those are kind of unique. I think it's worth running tree protection there.
Okay. So just so I know what we're talking about here. It looks like there's some trees that be relatively impossible to do. So I'm not sure the tree you're talking about.
Trees in the back, right?
The trees on the, on the.
Like there's one that I wanted to.
Most of the trees on the left side are the ones that Karen referred to. It'd be some heritage birch, the umbrella pine, and some on the right. The neighborhood property has already planted green giants on that side. So it's going to be a dense screening. Real soon.
On the tree garden, it was going to help.
There's two heritage birch, one umbrella pine, and six dark American olive. And they're probably all in the eight to twelve foot height. Umbrella pine, maybe fourteen to sixteen. The heritage birches are probably eighteen to twenty feet, multi-stud.
But these, all the trees that are out of the launch park, minds that we talked about.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, well, that's, so look, we can stare at those.
There is one crimson king hive barn on the right front post office. That one also maybe.
That can go.
That can go, okay.
Okay. We have a box of yesterday's.
See, it goes here.
Okay. Professionals got that out. All right, so moving down the list. John points out that the sideline indicated not comply with actual requirements. Says the point is not fourteen foot back from the roadway sideline as required. I think it has to be fourteen feet back. And we need to see the sidelines on the plan.
That's fine, we can do that. I already have them on the next set of revisions.
So just tell me right now.
Yep.
That it's going to be going to comply with the site distances, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Somebody, somebody's plantage you're showing, you're going to have to either move back or be.
Right, some of the plantings might have to go.
He lifted a ball. Is there a round of applause next day?
No, if, if they're below two and a half feet.
Okay, you're okay.
Then you're okay, but you know.
Most of them are.
But we have to have the site distance because, you know, it's a big issue on another project. We're holding it, we're holding fast to it.
Yeah, it's no problem.
Okay. Parking, the board should make a determination as the pill, build two zone. Well, cottage court is a different animal in the bylaw, okay? Cottage court has. It has a ten-foot side yard, rear yard, and front yard minimum. Okay? So technically, the setback, the build-two zone is a setback. So technically, the building setback is ten feet, which all of these buildings do comply with. Is the board fine with that interpretation? Because we have to start.
Close to what, the tentational stuff?
Do we have something else to get from that?
We have to. All right, so you're not supposed to have any parking in the front yard.
Oh.
Okay, so that's, so. So this is a different animal. So you're not supposed to have parking in the front build-two zone. If, so if the setback is ten feet, technically, they don't have parking in the build-two zone. I mean, we can, I can write it that way, or we can grant them a waiver. If you want to be sure, if you want to. Because of the odd shape of this lot, it's a, it's a pork chop lot. The only way to develop this lot for any type of development is to cottage court or a single family. So none of the other. Things, multifamily building misuse, they can't do that in this thing. But because the way the cottage court is written, it says ten-foot front side rear minimal. It doesn't, it's, it's not listed in the table like the multifamily building, et cetera. I, I see this one as a different animal.
The only thing I would ask is that it doesn't set a precedent to give you a waiver.
Well, and so we can say because, because of the unique shape of the lot and they do not have it. It's a cottage court, which, you know, has, we, we can make some arguments. That would be my proposal, to make some arguments to say that this is, it's a different animal. It's not like multifamily building. It says a ten-foot front yard minimum. And the buildings certainly comply. They are greater than more than ten feet. And it says no parking in the front build-two zone. Well, technically. Technically, you can interpret it that they're not parking in the build-two zone. Because they're not parking in the ten-foot area. But I need to know if the board is okay with that, or do you want to grant? And do you, do you want to go with that interpretation and grant a waiver? Or just grant a waiver to be, to be safe?
I, what is the board's why? We go with the first game, um, grid weight, which would be safe.
Okay.
But that's just me.
I'm going to go with what you said. I'm, I'm still thinking about the parking, sorry.
Well, this is not, there's no.
It seems if you, if we make the interpretation.
Yeah.
For a cottage.
Court, it has to.
Right, it has to be for cottage, it's for a cottage court.
Very specific.
You know. There's not any parking in the ten-foot area there. Should be sufficient.
So as long as we preface it with that this is just for this cottage court.
For the cottage court, okay. So then that's what, that's what we'll use.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, can I just, can I just let people know that are on Zoom? I saw someone's hand raised, but we're not, we'll take public comment at, at, at a different point. So just hold on to your questions and we'll get back to you for pub, public comment, okay?
Okay, so we'll do for a cottage court only with no waiver.
Yes.
Or you want the waiver, with a waiver?
If we're just interpreting it as it conforms to, seems like we don't need a waiver.
Okay, okay. All right. All right, so we're also supposed to have screening. Screening is supposed to be, you know, you have to screen the parking where it's visible from the street. And it's supposed to be five feet behind the front of the sign. Well, we can't, we can't do that.
Okay.
So you have, you have to screen with low type of screening, the parking.
Almost about fourteen feet below the street, so.
Right, in the two islands, it has to be screened so that you can. You can do it.
Yeah. Don't get three feet of something tall.
Yeah, you don't have a lot of room to put anything on. I mean, so, well, you know, we can, I can help you out there.
Yeah, great, okay.
That's a question, sorry, about the parking. I understand that there's eight proposed spots. And there's only six required by our bylaw. I'm just going to bring it up, even though it's not the bylaw and no one's going to agree with me, but. In all these places that we're putting over here, there is no place for anyone making a comment each.
And that's why I think.
It drives me out of this, and there's no harm compared anyway, so.
But that's why I think you kind of took a strong vote last time and said you agree that they should keep the eight spaces.
This is a.
This is a tiny spot.
Hey, you're going to have at least two people living in each of these, right?
Yeah.
I mean, when my kids come home, I get six hours in my driveway. Because everyone drives with a separate car, best situation. If my boss, there's nothing.
Well, then, then they're going to have to park in the T parking lot. But I, I think we agree that we should keep the eight spaces.
Well, absolutely, we should keep, it's going to be ten.
Well, they can't fit, they can't fit ten. They can, they can fit what they have.
In that, in that odd shape, that's what they can't complain.
This is what they have, they have a little area there, but. Well, you need to have, you have to meet the zoning bylaw per, per trees. What's more important?
Parking. In my opinion.
Well, and what is the part?
When people won't move into places because there's not a parking, don't have parking.
I know, might not be legal, but we park, run landscapes and studies for years, we parked down the end of the street.
So this is one of those trees that has that, and that's.
Well, we haven't been able to do that in, in one that's not on the sidewalk. We haven't been, but I don't know if it's a legal thing.
I'm not sure it's.
I'm not sure it's.
But there are, there is room down at the end of the street, and a lot of people, I don't need my guys, but.
Everybody else.
Everybody else is guys too. I guess we'll probably.
All right, so that leads us into the next thing, which is, you know, it's going to be really tough for deliveries.
Yeah.
You know, for, for Amazon and UPS and, you know, FedEx. I, I did send an email to the police chief asking him for his opinion on this. And I didn't get an answer.
So I don't think you can, something different than you do now, which is they pull up and park in the street and clear a spot.
So Mr. Wych, we know.
Now I have to drive all the way down.
Oh, yeah, you do it a longer.
No, a driveway. So Mr. Wych, normally if someone was going in, they would probably be down the other street, move turn around.
Right, right, because the post office is.
That's the post office.
There's a lot of parking every day. And on weekends, obviously, if they had a family member that was going to park, we would do the post office, it would also be.
Yeah, but the post office might not always be the post office, so.
Is it still?
It's still the post office right now.
We can't count on that parking. So.
I think the delivery thing is, it's just going to be what it is.
Okay, we can control that.
I'm trying to retire. I didn't rent a house.
Four units.
And there's going to be, they will all be able to move in, but we had that discussion last time, never. To stay there, hard with me and stuff.
They're going to have to use small trucks.
Yeah, we can move it, isn't look at it, it's like lots, right?
Yeah, it's not going to have any.
Oh, no, not that, it's just.
Touching, you've got to carry it all the way to get.
They have jobs to do.
But you do understand that there are other residents in the area in multifamily buildings. There's two multifamily buildings.
Okay.
Right there.
Right.
And it's, it can get congested sometimes. All right, so we'll, moving on. You, you need to show the fire truck turning into the site and how it's going to get into the, the cottage court. So we need to see how a fire truck is actually going to turn in that. We want turning radius on here. We want the fire truck on the plan.
It's no problem, we just have the template today. You guys have a good one.
All right, so. So I think they need one turn per eight spaces for parking. It looks like they have that. So that's why we can't pick out more, can't have more parking. So we talked about the parking is in the front of the site. So everybody agrees that the ten foot for ten foot. You know, we. Have to have a conversation, Mr. Leach, on screening. Previously, I've kind that you're okay with the extra two spaces. It's hard to read the landscape plan with the symbols and it's really hard to read. I can't, I'm not spending hours. I don't know what happened to the old way of doing a landscape plan where you put three azaleas, et cetera. But I, it's hard to read with the symbols.
You can change that.
It, it's very hard to read. So these are going to be topics.
Single family.
You meant the like.
In the HOA.
They have to have an HOA, we haven't even seen a draft HOA.
You're going to, you're going to sell them.
Right.
Yeah, maybe not.
Oh, I thought you said right there, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
The HOA is.
Well, we need to see a draft.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to see a draft. All right, so the other requirement that comes up with getting at the front yard is that. Twenty-five percent impervious in the front yard area. Now, if we're considering the front yard just the ten feet, then I need a calculation for how much impervious is in the front yard.
Right, I believe we gave that calculation, but we can't need to require it, the ground is going to be later. Because the twenty-two foot wide access within that ten feet already exceeds the limits.
So then.
We're at sixty percent.
Sixty percent, we can't, can't do anything to reduce that?
Well, it's only the, we need a twenty-foot wide driveway, the access occupied, and that's with the ten feet. So we can't change that. It's not, it's not easy.
Is the board.
I'm sorry, where can you show us where the calculation is written? You just like pointed out with the branch.
So it's twenty-five percent, correct?
Twenty-five percent.
So it's twenty-five percent of this ten-foot center. Twenty-two feet wide is the access. So we're already well over that twenty-five percent. We need to have twenty-two feet wide area from the site.
Why wouldn't this be done in the ten feet we were just talking about? The front yard?
Well, he's, do it, that's what I thought he's taking the calculation, that is in the ten feet.
Right, so it's. Okay, well, I'm, so we have about six hundred and twenty square feet within that ten-foot yard area.
But the yard, the front yard is the whole area across.
Right.
So, but you, you got to include the green space for the islands too.
The front yard area is ten feet from the front setback line, right? So it's this area we get.
Right.
Ten feet, that's six hundred and twenty square feet.
Okay.
Then we have two hundred and twenty square feet, which is the driveway that we need to enter the site.
So a third, basically.
Correct.
Do you want to do that?
Because thirty, thirty percent is, thirty-three percent is impervious, is what you're saying, not six.
Right. So we want to, we want to see that and is the board preliminary? What's your thought on granting a waiver to that?
I think given what this whole thing needs to be, I think you have to.
Yeah, it has to.
Yeah. I mean, it, this narrowing, it's going to make it hard for cars to get in there, hard for the fire truck to get in there.
That can be narrowed for later.
But is there a way we could do like impervious waiver with that? The, the first few feet of the driveway was.
It, it's good.
Only if somebody's going to take care of it.
Right.
No, it's a, that's the problem, because that's the problem.
These four homeowners may never do anything about it.
Yeah, that's the problem with that, you know, so we won't.
So I think, is it, we're in agreement that we could do this and clarify again because it's.
Yes, I would say yes.
That's okay.
Just, it's just a unique piece of property.
Right.
All right, so you say you're doing something different from the grass page section. Whatever you do, I want a stamped certification that it will meet H twenty loading.
Yep.
Because the fire department absolutely needs to know that.
Yeah, we agree.
Okay. You're going to do a turning radius for. The delivery trucks. They don't technically meet the fifty-foot. Data into all the surrounding properties. Is the board okay with this as show?
It's unique.
You mean fifty foot on it.
Right, you're supposed to get, get the existing conditions within fifty feet all around. Is the board okay that doesn't quite need that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. DBW was requested a hydrant at the end of the courtyard. That has to be accommodated, that's not done there yet.
So I spoke with the water department about that, and I sent you the correspondence. They were confused by the original design, they thought it was a cul-de-sac, if it's a roadway, it would be cul-de-sac. And we revised it to four individual connections at the roadway. And I, the water department agreed with that, we would give it a hydrant. As well as that fire department also would give it a hydrant, since it's also a two-way street.
I'm not sure I had that, I'm not sure that I saw that.
Okay.
Because the last correspondence.
Before that too.
That I have is, you know, on January thirty-first. And that from Patrick Riley, January nineteenth. I, you know, they wanted a hydrant.
All right, I did hide it for you, we had the address last week.
Okay.
Is there a hydrant at the street?
So yeah, there's currently two hydrants, one, one right here, one right here. And the, and the fire department.
Do they go?
Probably not.
They go. Like what's their trailer?
But we're going to do a six-inch line with a.
And that may change, right?
We're talking about sprinkling these ones. Each unit would have a sprinkler system, is what I think. But I talked to a few. Pat. It was their idea to give more distance between the first two units on the left, as it was tight. And they thought it would be a bit tighter if there was a fire in one of those. So that's why Paul pulled that threat one on the left, closer to the street. And then after thinking about it, I think that it would make sense to sprinkle each unit. I know it's going to be a lot more money, but I think that at the end of the day, it's what will be right.
I hope to take you there, yes, we appreciate that, thank you.
But so I think with that, we're going to need a hydrant inwards, right? Because the six-inch main is going to.
Yeah, that's.
So you need a foot of sprinkling.
And maybe we'll often change the, the design to a hydrant or some way to flush the line.
She made a call.
Yeah, some.
I told you about, I said it behind.
So you have to loop the line.
We'll provide these of flushing it rather than looping it. Either hydrant or an air duct.
I just, the word, word a lot of, lot of dramatic, but photometric plan for the, for the site. The lighting that they show is. Residential lighting in scale, and I, I, you know, I'm not sure that it's really.
Not super invasive, not super invasive.
Which diamonds light.
So we don't have an actual detailed lighting post, but.
We did, for the design review, we did.
No, you were asking about photometrics, I don't know if we need that.
I don't think we need that, but I think we do have.
Just lighting plan. Where are you?
Make sure they're all dark and you don't spill from.
The granite post, I think it was only eight foot, so it would be a six-foot high with the fixture on top of six foot.
Is the courtyard that lighting?
Um, yes, so it, so you kind of modify it a little bit. So it's not quite up to date on this plan, the next step will add more details, but. So it's not quite up to date on this plan, the next step will add more details, but one each from the, one in front of each unit. The doorway, um, we had two here, this version, I think I had. Yeah, I think I still have two here, um, one in each aisle of the, the pocket, and one at the entrance.
So you have light for people who park here, for them to walk and then you can rest.
Mr. Lee, do you know what the lights for the walkway for that?
They do. And we had talked, we had talked about new models.
Yeah.
Here, but we thought that the granite post would be nicer.
Yeah, okay, okay, those lights do work. I never remember them down there.
Yeah, I have them down there. We'll find the cleaning up site, which is taking a while to get a lot of debris and a lot of pavers and whatnot, but we're working towards. Cleaning up that whole back area, so, and then the fences, you know, would be along that. Poppy line. We talked about shadow box, with the design review.
Yes, I do remember that. Alright, so I did send you a whole package of aesthetic design stuff, I mean, it seems, it seems.
Okay.
Reasonable for the site. John commented that the board may want more information on those downspouts. You know, you wanna make sure that the basements don't flood. And if, you know, if they put pipes to extend them, where are they going? So I think we want more information on that.
We could do the vegetation if you want.
Mr. Lee, do they have four basements? Or they gotta have four basements?
Unfinished. But Karen, if you want, we could put that in, each, the asphalt is put in the ground, do a vegetation.
Like a drywall.
Use that drywall for each, okay?
Well, as long as it doesn't, you know, get.
Can't drain that to the basement.
It can't drain back to the basement, what, what do you think, John?
Yeah, it, it's pretty good soil there, but it's also close to property line, and it's close to basement, so you might have to be, you might have to put it towards the front. Like around instead, because you got more room in the tubs. But I don't know, I mean, I assume the water may, it would break one room, you're not gonna go around the back, you gotta go down middle. So you gotta look at what you got room, that might have to, I mean, it's a design issue, you probably could put. Something in the middle and be fired up the way to not flood the basement. It's only ten feet on the backside.
Right.
That doesn't give you enough room.
Right.
I mean, some of them have enough room, but most of them, the backs tight.
Right.
So you'd have to add a downspout at the corner and pipe it to the front maybe. And use like a chamber or whatever, I know we know that.
Well, that's what the, yeah.
That would be better, I think, but, and then, you know, for the small rain, but. Yeah, it just, there isn't a lot of room.
Right.
This is this time of year, you see everybody's got these pipes.
Yeah.
You know, this, it's all, and it's, I get a lot of work with lawyers, those people doing that.
But it's great soil, like you say, it's.
Yeah.
It has to just approximate because. Bring it out from, going into the other.
Yeah, some practice basis.
That's, I think that's a problem.
Alright, so John indicated that the test pit results indicate less than four feet of groundwater separation. Over, but over three feet, DP requires mining analysis for this condition. As a subsurface infiltration, you provide rate control. You typically make everybody do mining analysis, I don't know why you wouldn't here. So, you need a mining analysis.
That's fine.
Uh, uh, the question. It was like, it's like a three-point six.
Very close, it's not twice there. But I don't expect that the bound, it's good soil, the boundary will probably be okay. But like, if you make everybody do it, they should do it too.
Are, are you going to require an EV charging station?
Yes, I put one, yes.
For four units?
Yeah. You know, I looked it up, one percent of the population.
Okay.
But, it's just not a lot, is there electricity out there?
Well, we can.
Well, there'll be lights here, yeah.
Well, is that, is that a one twenty? I think they do.
Yeah.
I think you can, it takes longer to track it, but I wasn't anticipating they're gonna do that.
So we're forced to continue this over.
It's like that, see, like.
That's what I'm assessing, what? That's your charging station for one year?
I mean, it, sort of the issue is, is if you have homeowners who have electric vehicles.
I'm letting.
They're not gonna be able to charge them.
Well.
In your garage, something like that.
With this, this should be one.
Well, but the other issue, the other issue is if there's, you know, one person and only one person, and then the car is charging it or exploding that cost among.
That's the other thing.
I mean, I think you're on the split nature of property, I don't think it makes sense to have a shared charging station.
What, what I might suggest is. It's not too difficult to do, but she. Gonna have to kind of it in there. Just so the homeowners, if they wanna do, they can do it, right?
Yeah.
You leave it up to them.
Right.
Do you have a central transformer, or is it gonna be? Yeah, we would have a transformer probably with, with a bendage between the T-brookies on the inside. It could be a.
Could you almost do it, like put in the infrastructure without putting the thing for a separate meter, and then somebody that wants to do it, base the meter? And without building the stand and everything else, don't wanna dig all lots of conduits.
Yeah. Infrastructure in, for it, and leave it up to the people who bought the place.
Put the conduit in, and maybe a little concrete bath where you can bounce the media in. And then, not put it in until somebody wants to pay.
Yeah, okay, I got that.
Well, yeah, that would be.
It's cheap while you build it, we'll do that.
Right.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, okay, alright, so. Alright, so the current, the next design review, we had a meeting on this project is two twenty-six. The design review still has some issues, we don't have recommendation from them yet, they are, they are liking it. But you don't have their recommendation yet. And the HOA, we have, we need to see a draft HOA.
We could work on that. Number two, do you want me to email you directly, or?
Yes. So John, do you have any other issues?
No, you did very well, I didn't give you these all. The only thing I was gonna say, because I looked into it too, this front yard, uh, in further series, the bylaw has the minimum frontage of, I think, fifty feet. So with a fifty-foot frontage, you could never comply. So it's one of those things that just probably was overlooked in the process of whoever put the bylaw together, because the, with the, I mean, you gotta have a two-way road. I mean, you gotta have at least twenty feet for fire protection, if there's a going sidewalk. Get from the built, you know, so if you add a, get a fifty-foot with the, the road, berm, curb, and a sidewalk. There's no way you're ever gonna meet it.
It would have to be impervious driveway.
Yeah, and like you say, again, the impervious driveways.
Not pervious pavement.
Yeah, pervious pavement driveway, yeah, it's just. Again, yeah. It's not really practical, um, in a lot of cases, I mean, if it was a big enough project that had. Enough money to pay for all that maintenance, it's another thing, but when it's conduits. Again, no one's gonna, I mean, if it was an apartment problem, like sort of a management problem. Different.
That would be the responsibility.
You know, this one, I don't think, but I think, if you look at it, I mean, a fifty-foot frontage, there's probably plenty of lot, fifty feet of frontage, they're never gonna be able to make that. You know, any smaller lot, it's never gonna be able to make it.
A level-one EV charging station is unfindable. Typical for a home, or discussion, so. If you're just putting the infrastructure, you should have that as a discussion.
Or you have to two and five or something?
Yeah, whatever you need. It, it's kinda, you have to look at it and say, what if everybody wanted one? But it's not too exotic, it doesn't sound bad.
Alright, so then, in summary, we grade seventeen-five, um, cash for the density bonus, take out the Norway maples. Add tree protection, we wanna show the site distance. We are going to say that the built-to-zone is ten feet, and it conforms for cottage court only, they don't need a waiver. We're taking advice, you know, we have the extra parking spaces that we're going to have in there, they need to show the fire truck.
We need to do a bounty loss.
Bounding analysis, we need to agree, we need to work on screening, the bounding analysis, we need, um. We're gonna give them a waiver for the twenty-five-foot impervious in the front yard. We want, we're still working on the fire access and every status to all be certified. Uh, you're okay with the not going, uh, no more existing conditions data, data. We're, we'll verify about the hydrant. Mounding analysis, they'll do conduit, but not EV charging station, and we need a HO, we need the draft HOA.
Good, how's that guys?
Some.
So, based on all that work. We were thinking the next meeting would be April twenty-fifth. That should work. This is a public hearing, does anybody, will have anything to say, not just please guys? Anybody online, sure, if you have that, is anybody that wants to talk about this?
If there's anyone online that'd like to make a comment regarding nineteen-four place, now's the time, if you're free, raise your hand, we can unmute you to make your comments. I guess this maybe they were. Probably.
Maybe they're listening. No. One with no short equipment, Andy, who have our.
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing, site plan and administrative review as special permit. For density for our cottage court and groundwater permit in Blue Center and Neighborhood District. Greenbush Gateway District, Greenbush Village Center Sub-District, VCN, DVG, GBC, until April twenty-two. April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, at six thirty PM, and to continue the time of action, confiding at the town court until June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Eastern second.
Second.
I'll be there.
Hi.
May I watch you, Jim, we'll see you, uh, April, when is that, April?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Exactly, seven fifteen.
Whoa.
It's a lot of time.
Thank you.
Enjoy your vacation.
Your COVID there.
We're leaving it tonight.
Uh, yes. So now we have a continuing public hearing for major site review for eighteen through place, is it last? Yep. Oh, no, it's the last. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you. Hey.
What up, Mr. Lawson? Don't go.
You are. Who's on first floor?
How are you doing today?
Very well, thank you, love you all.
Yes.
So what's. Okay, so what's going on, Mr. Lawson?
I believe it's all problems.
When you move forward with the eighteen through place.
I believe that I'll be, and everything has been addressed or can be conditioned, and so I have given you a draft decision for this project. Just that here, okay. I did it in the same format as all the other VCN stuff, I'm sorry it's long.
It is.
But I'm, I'm sorry.
Alright, okay, we gotta make sure we got our, I see, plus our eyes. Are you ready?
I think I'm in first line.
We want to go this, we went, we went through this. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're all set. Deeply through this. Okay, are you ready?
You're ready.
Right. I move to make the following times fact, on May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, the applicant David Larson filed an application for major site plan review. For shop for plumber in Village Center in Neighborhood District under situat zone bylaws, section five eighty, seven fifty, and seven seventy. The application included but is not limited to the following. A, cover letter dated May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, application forms including attachment A, B, C, and F, F, and lowest D. The filing fees and the butters list. C, site plan for eighteen through place in situat mass dated May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, by Grady Consulting LLC consisting of two sheets. D, building specifications and floor plan for morton building for use as a commercial warehouse. E, stone water management design calculations for eighteen through place, assessors map fifty-three dash five dash seven. Situate mass dated March ninth, twenty twenty-three, by Grady Consulting LLC. F, watershed plan for eighteen through place in situat mass dated May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, by Grady Consulting LLC. Two, the property that is the subject of the application is opposed to one parcel. Parcel is what, fifty-three dash five dash seven, and it is. Twenty-three thousand four hundred fifteen square foot, all of which is upland. The parcel has frontage and access off to place a private way. The property is currently approved with existing commercial structure, existing shed, and existing compacted private driveway. Three, the project is located in the Village Center in Neighborhood, VCN, Sowing District, Greenbush Driftway Gateway District, GDG. And the Greenbush Village Center Sub-District, GCB. VCN, GDG, GBC. For the zone by law, in effect, this project is by law approved by constituent annual town meeting on four-ten, twenty twenty-three. And the attorney general on six thirteen, one twenty-three, and posted to the website on July fifth, fourth, and third. By the project proposed by the applicant, consists of a farmer shop and flex space slash fabrication building. In the VCN, GDG, GBC, a farmer shop is an allowed use by right for section four twenty of the zone bylaws. And a flex space slash fabrication building is allowed, is an allowed building type in the GCB Sub-District for section five eight or three. Six, the proposed flex space fabrication building and UV building will be twenty-six feet, ten point five inches to the feet. There is no height requirement, building and building is less than the maximum height of forty feet, and is set for, as set for the situation by law. Seven, there are five total parking spaces provided in the building. This includes one handicap parking space on south side. There are three exterior parking spaces and two interior parking spaces. Parking is covered by section seven sixty point six of the situat zone by law, the minimum requirements of parking table one. And requires one space for four hundred square feet of gross floor area. There is nineteen hundred twenty gross square feet for the building. Eight, section seven sixty point seven does apply as the proposed project requires off-street parking in the VCN. The property of eighteen through place does not require a pedestrian front overlay zone for section five eight or two of the situat by law. Now, no public property standards are required of this project, as no new streets are being created. The project proposes to use the existing two curb cuts on the property. Ten, a flex space fabrication building is allowed, is an allowed building type of section five eighty point three table one as a proposed project. It has the following development and design standards found in section five eight point three table one, including minimum block size is not required. Street frontage of fifty feet is required on a public road. The project has a hundred seventy-seven point five feet of frontage on true place a private way. A waiver will be required. Minimum sound yard is ten feet, the project has provided thirty-six point four feet. Minimum front side and rear yard setbacks are twenty feet. The project has provided thirty-one point three, front yard setback, a ten-foot set, side yard setback. Two with northwest, and a thirty-seven point three rear yard setback. A waiver for the side yard setback will be required. There is a maximum of fifty percent building coverage of the law. The building coverage provided is approximately sixteen point sixty-six percent. The proposed flex space fabrication building and existing office building have an impervious area of thirty-nine hundred square feet. Eleven, industrial buildings are exempt from section seven fifty, a flex space fabrication building by definition serves light industrial uses. The proposed building is a flex space fabrication building. Twelve, sustainable site design is required in the V C N district for section 751 of the zone by law, such zone, such that the stormwater management shall conform to best management practices as described in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Stormwater Amendment. For the project, the predevelopment ideology is maintained by infiltrating stormwater in underground chambers. Project's post-construction stormwater feet rating and volume runoff is not exceeded for the 1, 2, 10, 25, and 100-year, 24-hour rate limits. Stormwater best management practices are required and meet for best practices for use of a deep-sunk, footed catch basin for proprietary stormwater treatment unit and a full subsurface filtration. The project minimizes impervious surfaces to the provision of only the required archeists provided. The total impervious area on the site is 13,507 square feet, and the total disturbance is 12,945 square feet out of the 23,415 F G square feet site. Greater than 80% T S S removal has been provided as the drainage improvements are located out of the Water Resource Protection District. Adequate recharge has been provided. Thirteen, a landscape plan is required for all submissions except for made by planning board, which plan should to the greatest extent possible utilize native plants. No plants listed as invasive by Massachusetts shall be used and existing invasive plants shall be removed. A project landscape plan has been provided in which native plantings are reasonably close. Moreover, the wide area of front yard is minimized and fertilizer use is discouraged. A screening of the building and parking area on the side has been provided. This requirement has been met. Fourteen, section 760, parking, parking has been provided per the zone by law. Five parking spaces are required for the 1,984 square feet proposed building. At one space for 400 square feet of gross floor area industrial uses. One handicap parking spaces included in the numbers. Two parking spaces are eternal, two are to be built. Fifteen, the zoning bylaw, section 77.6, sets forth a standard review for a proposed site plan to provide or propose developments which are of a size that may have significant impacts of neighborhoods. New business structures require a site plan reviewed by the planning board. In reviewing applications, the planning board is required to ensure 203 consistent with reasonable use of the site for the purposes permitted by the regulations of the district in which the land is located, all of the law. Section 77.6, A, site plan approval standard A, protection of adjoining premises against detrimental and offensive methods of utilizing the site. Finally, the site is currently used as a box building. The proposed building will be added to the site with the allowed use of the plumber shop in accordance with the zoning by law. The standard has been met. Sixteen, section 77.6B, site plan approval standard C, traffic safety and ease of access at street and highway entrances and exits of driveways taking the path of traffic volume, grades, site distances, and distances between such driveway entrances, exits, and the nearest existing street or highway intersections in times of peak traffic flow. Finally, the proposed project is located on a private way of true place. The proposed project will have its own separate off-street parking, meeting with the requirements of section 760 of the zoning by law. Access to the site will be provided from an existing curb cut of the place that will be paved. A waiver of the number of driveways will be required as the frontage is 177.5 feet and is almost supposed to have one driveway being less than 200 feet. As the driveways are existing, a waiver is reasonable considering traffic volume and grades. This standard is met. Seventeen, section 770.6C, site plan approval standard C, safety and adequacy of driveway layout, pedestrian safety, off-street parking, and loading sites minimizing the layer from headlights and light intrusion, sufficiency of access for service vehicles such as electricity, gas, fuel, telephone, laundry, rubbish removal, water sewer, fire police animals, or other routine or emergency vehicles. Finally, the proposed project will have its own separate off-street parking, meeting requirements of 760 of the zoning by law. Access will be from an existing driveway opening onto true place, which is the proposed to be paved. The driveway access off true place is 24 feet wide. The circulation will be one-way with a 14-foot wide driveway. Circulation will go either through the building and out the new paved driveway or around the existing building and out the other driveway. No sidewalks are proposed or existing on the place. The applicant has demonstrated the site will have sufficient access for service and emergency vehicles. Headlight glare should not be an issue as there are fencing and screening to adjacent property. Cut-off light fixtures will be used to minimize light glare, light glare if lights are necessary. This standard is met. Eighteen, section 770.6D, site plan approval standard D, adequacy of the methods of disposal for sewage, refuse, and other wastes resulting from uses permitted on the site, safety and adequacy of water supply and distribution, and our five fine facilities on the site. Finally, the project proposes to connect to the existing sewer service in true place and connect to the existing water main located in true place, private to the fire hydrant. The building will have fire sprinklers for fire protection. Trash and recycling bins are under the open deck of the existing 18th place and also be used in the new building. Trash, which will be emptied on a weekly basis or more frequently as necessary. This standard has been met. Nineteen, section 770.6E, site plan approval standard E, adequacy of surface and stormwater drainage and snow belt runoff within and from the site, including but not limited to all walkways, driveways, buildings, parking, and loading areas. Finally, the proposed stormwater management system for the project consists of a catch basin, pipe-torn boiler grid separator, and then to an underground sub-circulus recharge system for the proposed building driveway. Snow storage area has been located to the west side of the property. The board engaged Horstley-Witten Group to evaluate the adequacy and the accuracy of Grady Consulting LLC's stormwater report and data as well as the F S A of design. Horstley-Witten Group submitted detailed written comments to the planning board. In response to these comments, the applicant and Grady Consulting LLC provided responses, revised reports that were requested, and updated the site plans. After further review by Horstley-Witten Group, the applicant has determined to, applicant was determined to have adequately addressed the comments and recommendations assuming the stormwater management system is built as designed. The applicant has submitted a stormwater management plan and operation and maintenance plan that ensures that the project will be managed appropriately for the entire construction period and thereafter during ongoing operations. The applicant has submitted an erosion and sedimentation control plan that has been reviewed by the board's period review consultant. The board deemed acceptable with the conditions provided. This standard is.
Is.
Is met. The review of the stormwater management system by the planning board's consulting engineer and their approval of the site plan eliminates the requirement for a separate stormwater permit for work that conforms to the plans. Twenty, section 770.6F, site plan approval standard E, adequacy of provisions made to protect against toxic or hazardous materials or oil discharge or loss resulting from erosion, accidental damage, spillage, vandalism, measures such as spill control provisions in the vicinity of fuel delivery points, secured storage areas for toxics, toxic or hazardous materials or oil, and indoor storage provisions for corroable or dissolvable materials. Finally, the site is partially within the Water Resource Protection District. There are no toxic or hazardous materials proposed to be stored on-site and no oil storage or discharges are respected. The standard is met. Twenty-one, section 770.6G, site plan approval standard G, minimizing the volume of cut and fill, the number of trees six, of six-inch caliber are upgraded, remove the length of stone walls, reduce soil erosion and destruction of other natural features. Finally, the site is relatively flat, so minor grade changes are proposed. There is minimal cut and fill, no, no existing trees are proposed to be destroyed or disturbed on the site. The standard is met. Twenty-two, section 770.6H, site plan approval standard H, minimize obstruction of scenic views for publicly accessible locations. Finally, the site does not consist of any scenic views for publicly accessible locations, and therefore the project complies with this requirement. On three, section 770.6I, site plan approval standard I, parking areas shall be adequately bucketed shaded during, using native vegetation. Parking lots with 10 or more spaces shall be planted with at least one shade for 10 spaces of a caliber of at least 2.5 inches, D B H, with each tree providing shade to the parking area. Parking areas envisioning degrading outlets such as dumpsters and loading trucks shall be designed to minimize visual intrusion for public ways and residentially owned or zoned areas. In addition, due to the screening of such areas by wood fences and dense native evergreen hedges of 5 feet or more at time of closing shall be relaxed. The use of chain link fences shall be avoided except in industrial areas. Outdoor lighting, including lighting on the exterior of a building or lighting in parking areas, shall be arranged to minimize glare and light spill over to neighborhood problems. No outdoor light shall be located within 20 feet above the ground. Finally, the site has two existing driveways. The proposed building is to be located off the first driver. An existing star gate fence provides sunscreen to the property. A row of fiberglass is proposed on the inside of the star gate fence to provide additional screening. No light is proposed, so there will be no glare and light spill over to adjacent properties, hereby meeting the requirements of the bylaw. This standard is met. Twenty-four, section 770.6J, site plan approval standard J, safe, functional, and convenient pedestrian bicycle and where practical transit access and hotmail pedestrian and bicycle network within the property and 25 pedestrian and bicycle facilities and generators. Finally, the surrounding area of countryway provides safe, functional, convenient pedestrian access to the Greenbush train station. There is no sidewalk located on true place. This standard is met. Based on this, based on these findings, the planning board finds a stormwater permit, site plan review, and special permit in Village Center and Neighborhood District based on requirements under the Village Center and Neighborhood District, section 580, 760, 770, as the project will be in hiring with the general purposes of the bylaw meets the requirement of Mass General laws, chapter 40A, and it will not have a greater detrimental impact on the neighborhood than the current office building and is designed with consideration for the public, for public health and safety.
Second, for discussion.
Second, for discussion. I'll update.
For discussion.
Discussion. I'm not discussing.
I'm not doing bad.
A whole big changes.
I'd still be on page one.
On twelve. Uh, this, second, it's the third sentence, start of the strike, post-problem. Stormwater degree, volume, grade, volume runoff, I think after that should say does not exceed construction rates and volumes for the 1, 2, 10, 1, 5. It definitely didn't there, but it's all met. And then, the only other change in the act was just editorial on eighteen, second to the last seven. I don't think you were good.
Yeah. I caught, I caught two other things. Number six, I have to take out misuse building. Um, and number, and my last, based on the findings, the planning board finds the site plan review because it's by a special permit, it's from a law. I was slipped in there.
Yeah, we can help you with that. But if you need help, you let us know.
Okay, second amendment.
Second amendment, all of them.
Bye.
Decision. Based on the findings of that and testimony provided at the public hearing, the planning board approves the site plan review in the Village Center and Neighborhood District 18th place site with the following conditions, general requirements. All construction work shall be done in accordance with five plans submitted by Ross Engineering Company, a subsidiary of Grady Consulting LLC entitled Site Plan for 18th Place and for 2020, consisting of two sheets, sheet one of, sheet one of two and two of two dated May 17th, 2023, and with revisions through 1 to 2024. Two, stormwater management design calculations for 18th place, assessors map 53-5-7, situat mass by Grady Consulting LLC dated March 9th, 2023, with revisions through September 16th, 2024, Melville, excuse me, 16th, 2023. Three, operation and maintenance plan post-ramp system post-construction, map 53-05-07, 18th place, situat mass, true place, realty LLC. Four, narrative of 18th place, find application for a major site plan review in the V C N district dated 5/17/2023, including information on a Morton building for the plum shop. Six, floor plan for plumber shop. Seven, watershed plan for 18th place in situ mass, sheet one of one, dated May 17th, 2023, by Ross Engineering Company, subsidiary of Grady Consulting LLC. Final building elevations must be approved by the councilor prior to issuance of building permit and formance to submitted material. A copy of the approved formal conditions must be kept on-site at all times for construction. Two, with this site plan review requires approval permitting or licensing of any local state or federal agency. Such required approval permitting or licensing is deemed a condition of the town sitri planning boards, planning board or the board approval of this site plan review, including but not limited to approval aboard by the select board and the partner of public works, P W, in all public rights apply. Construction shall meet all applicable federal, state, and local laws, regulations, including but not limited to those of the city D P W, wire department, building department, board of health, planning board, as well as the Massachusetts D E P, and state building code, all necessary requirements and approvals must be received prior to construction. Three, construction shall meet all requirements of the situat zone by law. Four, the applicant shall name the current applicant and all successors in interest. This site plan review will allow for the two years, which shall not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of appeal under general laws, chapter 40A, section 17, from the grant thereof. If substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced except for cause, or if construction has not begun by such date except for cause. The planning board may extend said period of cause shown upon receiving a written request from the applicant prior to the expiration of said period, which requests shall be provided, shall provide a detailed description of the good cause for seceding and extension of public hearing may be required. This approval is limited to one flex space slash fabrication building with no office mezzanine. The use of the space is limited to a shop for plumber and associated plumbing uses. No bulk storage is allowed in the building. Six, the applicant shall obtain the plan endorsement of, endorsement from the planning board to the site plan review and V C N special permit within 90 days of the expiration of the appeal period and this decision can be filed. All conditions shall be inscribed on the plan to provide endorsement. Seven, a new plan must be provided to endorsement to remove any reference to a general commercial building and requirements as the building type is a flex space fabrication building. Removal of the note to re-put the, to relocate the existing fence to provide the arrow to be paid on per in the proper spot and to show the snow storage area from the proposed site plan versus the proposed. Eight, storage of fertilizers and pesticides is not allowed unless they. Eight, storage of fertilizers and pesticides is not allowed unless they are covered or contained. Nine, no vehicle washing is to occur of a site. Ten, no outside storage of plumbing supplies or discarded plumbing objects is allowed, including discarded water tanks. Waivers and special permits. A waiver is requested from zoning by law, section five eighty point three, table one, allowing building types in the V C N district to allow a flex space fabrication building on a private way versus a public way. Drew place is used as a public way. The board grants this waiver. Twelve, a waiver is requested from zoning by law, section five eighty point three, table one, allowing building types in the V C N district to allow for the side setback to be ten feet where twenty feet is required. There is an existing stockade fence and there will be a landscape screen as well as the building at its north side adjacent to a residence. The board grants this waiver. Thirteen, a waiver is requested under section seven sixty point seven C of the zoning by law to allow the number of driveways to be two without two hundred feet of frontage. Two driveways already exist for the one hundred seventy-seven point five feet of existing frontage. The board grants this. Utilities, parking, traffic, and street included. Fourteen, management and repair of the driveway and parking areas, stormwater management system. Site utilities, snow removal, and landscaping shall be the responsibility of the applicant. Fifteen, all parking is limited to designated spaces as shown on plan. Five circus parking spaces include one handicap accessible space authorized. Two parking spaces of the five spaces are determined building. Sixteen, no underground irrigation systems are allowed to prevent the gas water distribution system or in any manner use with municipal water in accordance with the policy made effective by the select board on October eighth, twenty fourteen, and reaffirmed by the Citro Water Commissioners on May twenty-sixth, twenty fifteen. And irrigation, all irrigation systems installed in accordance with the policy must be supplied by onsite sources of private waters supplied at the expense of the property owner. Seventeen, the applicant shall allow members and town officials of the planning board, other persons acting in the authority of the planning board as its agents to enter upon any lands and carry out such surveys and inspections that may be deemed necessary and place and maintain monuments and marks. The applicant shall cooperate with the planning board and town officials and assist them in their efforts to verify that the layout, design, and construction in the work, work in the site plan review plan are satisfactory and conform to the town specification and requirements to clean. Eighteen, independent inspector or inspectors contracted or employed through the town shall perform required construction inspections according to section nine of the subdivision rules and regulations and as otherwise defined herein. All required inspections shall take place at the inspected by the inspector, including water and sanitary sewage facilities. The inspector or inspectors shall be approved by the town planner and D P W, and shall work under the direction of the town planner. The cost of these inspections shall be paid by the applicant. Written reports will be submitted to the applicant and the planning board in a timely manner stating results of any and all required inspections during construction unless more frequent reports are needed. Forty-eight hours minimum advanced remiss is required for all inspections. All stormwater recharge structures require inspection. At the bottom of each escalation by the consulting engineer slash independent inspector, noise, dust, and air quality control shall be in accordance with D P W regulations. Nineteen, construction of the proposed driveway parking area, proposed drainage system, proposed water system, proposed sewer system shall be supervised by a registered professional engineer. Said supervising engineer shall certify the integrity of the planning board and D P W at completion of the proposed driveway parking area drainage system, water system, and sewer system were constructed in accordance with the plans and that said system are functioning in full accordance with the plan. The certification of the proposed driveway parking area utilities shall be accompanied by as-built plans signed and stamped by a professional surveyor and the supervising registered professional engineer prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit for the building or registered professional engineer shall inspect the exterior of the building as necessary and certify to the planning board and the building commissioner with his signature and stamp on an as-built plan that grading and stormwater management systems conforms to that shown on the site plan review plans. And are functioning in accordance with the design requirements and any variation raised in material and does not materially alter the performance of the stormwater system. The site development as builds, including building structure, geography, driveway, water, sewer, gas, cable, water optic, electrical, and storm drainage infrastructure will be submitted in Auto Cab format twenty thirteen or higher or E S R I interchange format registered to the Massachusetts State Mainland Board that's North American data of nineteen eighty-three compatible with the town's system along the stand and sign clause of said plans. Twenty-one, materials for utility construction shall meet D P W construction standards. Twenty-one, a street opening permit shall be obtained for each individual utility connection. Twenty-two, the applicant shall obtain all necessary approvals for use of town water prior to scheduling a pre-construction conference and any construction commencing. Any required upgrades, modifications, or connections shall be at the owner's expense. Installation of all water mains and appliances shall be performed, shall be performed according to the specifications of the D P W water division. Copies of all necessary approvals shall be furnished to the town planner by the applicant. Determination of existing, I have a mistake, of existing water service slash by law of the proposed use shall be provided by the applicant, D P W, and town planner for your approval prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference. Twenty-four, the applicant shall obtain all necessary approvals for use of town sewer prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference and any construction commencing. Any required upgrades, modifications, or connections shall be at the applicant's expense. Installation of sewer mains and appliances shall be performed according to the specifications of the D P W sewage division. Copies of all necessary approvals shall be furnished to the town planner by the applicant. Twenty-five, all replacement of connection to town sewer, drainage, and installation of water mains and appliances shall be performed according to the specifications of the Citri D P W with the independent inspector contracted or employed by the town to review the construction activity and show compliance with the town rules and regulations. D P W personnel must be in attendance for any sewer drainage and water infrastructure and appliances work in the town rights of way and on the project site. Twenty-six, the building, parking, and any walkways and any required signage shall meet all applicable requirements of the A P A and A A B and the Citri Commission on Disabilities if what the law. Twenty-seven, the applicant shall ensure any signs, landscaping, and other features located within the sun triangle areas of the project, side driveways, and intersection of group place outside of stall and name cane, so there's not too many lines of sight, not too see two point five feet in height. Twenty-eight, all signs and payment markers shall be installed. Markings to be installed shall conform to the applicable specification of the manual or uniform traffic control devices, M U T C D. All payment markings in the public way shall be verified. Twenty-nine, the applicant shall ensure that snow windows located within the side triangle areas of the project site driveway section, group place that exceed two point five feet in height or otherwise embedded sideways are promptly removed. Thirty-six, snow storage areas have been designated onsite. The applicant shall provide snow storage areas on the proposed site prior to endorsement. The applicant shall ensure all maintenance personnel are informed of snow storage locations. When onsite the capacity is exceeded, an onsite location shall be used in compliance with all federal, state, and local laws. The icing and sanding agents can only be stored onsite if they are covered or contained. Thirty-one, trash management shall be interned to the building. Trash and recycling bins are located up the existing open deck and actively used for this portion of the project as well. Trash removal shall occur as often as needed till debris is not placed outside the open deck area, but at least on a weekly basis. Thirty-two, all electrical telephone cable and similar utilities shall be located underground. Thirty-three, except for the town-owned segments of the sewer and water line from the property line outward, all utilities included but not limited to stormwater drainage shall be maintained by the applicant according to the operation and maintenance plan proposed drainage system. Post-construction received November sixteen, twenty twenty-three by Brady Consulting LLC, which is attached to this decision. The operation and maintenance plan proposed drainage system post-construction shall be provided to all property owners and property management. Thirty-four, if the drainage system is not performing as designed and condition or stormwater is inserted over to a body properties over the street, the stormwater authority can require all necessary mitigation to permanently remedy the situation. This condition applies to all construction activities since revised issuance of a certificate of completion to apply during all ongoing operations of the building site. Thirty-five, no separate stormwater permit is required as long as the site is fully according to the group plans and stormwater calculations. This approval and conditions constitute stormwater permit. Thirty-six, inspection of all infiltration circuits must be performed by the planning boards, the consulting engineer, and the design engineer prior to any backfill or system pump installation to conform, to confirm suitability of the soil mix. Really out of there. Oh, yeah. By location, please. Okay. Thirty-seven, soil conditions at the bottom of posted infiltration areas shall be inspected with the town's consulting engineer prior to infiltration devices being installed with backfill, erosion control, and basic. Thirty-eight, an erosion, erosion control plan has been provided. The plan shall be followed if changes are necessary, are necessary requests to be announced. No major deviation shall occur. Thirty-nine, stockpile shall be located as shown on the plans and must be protected with erosion controls included but not limited to subsocks and tech were proceeding. Environmental conditions, noise and dust, water, sand, noise levels should be monitored by the Massachusetts Division of Air Control and Noise Policy. Forty-one, the applicant shall follow all regulations under the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, three ten C M R seven point zero zero, air pollution control, seven point oh one, general regulations to the air pollution, and three ten C M R seven point oh nine, U, dust odor construction and demolition for three ten C M R seven point oh nine, U, dust odor construction demolition. Water must be used with excessive emissions of particulate matter through the construction project. A dust control plan must be provided to the planning board for review and approval prior to the construction conference. Landscaping and site amenities. Forty-three, all changes to the proposed plans must be prevented to the town planner for approval. The town planner or the planning inspector have the authority to approve minor changes or deviation from the group plans and/or details needed for lighting, signage, paving materials, fencing, or landscaping. All other changes shall be approved by the planning board. Material selection shall be provided to the town planner for review and compliance for the group plan prior to installation. Forty-four, a separate sign permit shall be required in the building department for any freestanding signs unless otherwise accepted into the zoning bylaws. Signs shall be fully located on the occupants' property and shall not block side lines, traffic, entry, egress, or inside. Forty-five, all proposed lawn areas shall have a minimum six inches of clean screen lawn. A bill of weight shall be provided to the town planner during construction to show that the lawn is clean. Forty-six, the existing lawn strip for the project, stripped for the project shall not be spread out on the site if it contains invasive, invasive species, i.e. not leaved. Preventing what? Forty-seven, buildings shall be constructed in accordance with architectural elevations and plans submitted for the project. Quality of materials, construction, and color shall not substantially deviate from those as shown on the elevations and dust during public hearing without review and approval of the planning board. Forty-eight, final building plan stamped by a registered architect shall be provided to the planning department prior to a building permit being issued for review or insistancy with the elevations and the rendering described in condition one. If the plan differs from the approved plan, approval of the changes, approval of the changes of the planning board will be required. Forty-nine, certification shall be provided to the town planner by the architect prior to a certificate of occupancy that the building as constructed is in substantial compliance with the approved plans. Fifty, prior to scheduling the pre-conference, uh, uh, conference, sorry, pre-construction conference, the applicant shall provide to the planning board A copies of the reported site plan review and plan B, a check to cover costs of inspections by the town consulting engineer. These shall include minimum inspections of subdivision rules and regulations section nine for the driveway, parking areas, walk, and stormwater management systems, water systems, municipal sewage connections, and sanitary sewage line, new purbing and eroses, erosion, and dust control measures, as well as any specific requirements contained herein which may require review and/or inspections by the town. The specific amount shall be provided by the planning department based on consulting engineer estimate. Shall be subject to amendment from town to town and shall be supplemented by the applicant as requested by the town. C, construction schedule included approximate dates for installation of erosion of control and other site protection slash stabilization, structure of the building, and all applicable items in subdivision rule and regulation set section nine. And D, a type and amount of security provided by the applicant reasonably satisfactory to the planning board to cover the satisfactory completion of site and infrastructure features shown on the site plan, including landscaping, parking utilities, drainage, signs, lighting, and regulated conditions imposed by the board. The amount should be based on the applicant's contractor's estimates of course, excuse me, estimates of cost of these items reviewed by the town's consulting engineer and shall be approved by the planning board prior to the pre-construction conference. E, providing, provide contract, contact data for the site contractor, general contractor, and twenty-four hour member for responsible party in the event of emergency. Fifty-one, within two calendar weeks prior to the applicant's notification of the town, to the town planner that it intends to commence any work on the project site, a pre-conference, pre-construction conference shall be held with the applicant, their representative, representatives, their engineer, the site contractors, the town planner, the town engineer, and other D P W representatives as necessary, the police department, the planning board's consulting engineer, and other representatives of the town as the board feels are necessary. A list of all contractor, contractor contacts, including names and telephone numbers, shall be provided to the planning board, D P W, and police department. At least one telephone number contact shall be available twenty-four hours per day in the event of an emergency. Fifty-two, the property lines of the subject property shall be marked or flagged in, in the field under the direction of a surveyor and a notification given to the town planner and consulting engineer a minimum of three business days prior to the start of construction. The property line shall be staked or pinned at the time, at all times during construction. Fifty-three, a stable, stabilized construction entrance and silt fence socks must be installed prior to any earth-stirring activities onsite, including but not limited to clearing and grubbing. Construction expenses shall be required as necessary to comply with federal, state, and local laws required during construction. Fifty-four, construction work shall not begin prior to seven A M, weekdays, and eight A M on Saturdays, and shall cease no later than seven P M or dusk, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal state holiday, legal state or federal holiday. Fifty-five, the board reserves the right to require the consulting engineer to visit the site weekly or as often as necessary during the construction to observe and report and report on management and matters within the scope of the planning board's authority. Fifty-six, all earth moving slash disturbance operations shall only occur while erosion and sedimentation controls control measures are in place and approved by the town planner or the town consulting engineer. Such control measures shall remain in place until the board's consulting engineer determines after her consultation with the town planner that the danger of erosion or sedimentation no longer exists. It is the applicant's affirmation, affirmative responsibilities to ensure the maintenance and management of all stormwater control measures at all times during constructions to ensure there are no increase of stormwater flow, velocity, or volume to abiding properties at any time. Fifty-seven, construction activities on the site shall conform to the town situated general bylaws. Fifty-eight, no sediment in still clean water shall be allowed to leave the site during construction. Fifty-nine, no parking or unloading on due place shall be permitted during construction unless approved in advance and controlled at the same time by the police department. Construction vehicles shall use designated construction site access on site. Sixty, all construction parking shall be on site unless otherwise approved by the planning board. Sixty-one, the applicant shall hold by the city police department forty-two hours in advance when his equipment, equipment, and constructed material arrive to the site with many of the safety hazards, material destruction, of delayed subsequent, a police detail is necessary to ensure safe passage. Any police detail required is at the expense of the applicant as required by the police department determines his negligence. Sixty-two, the applicant shall not allow any large construction equipment on truck to stay near or idle on public roads and shall not allow such equipment or trucks to idle outside prior to seven a.m. Sixty-three, the applicant shall provide the town with the routes construction traffic will use so that in a safety hazard or material disruption of the public way in feed safe path this detail will be obtained by the applicant at its expense. Sixty-four, construction activities shall be conducted in a working like manner at all times. Wollen dust or debris shall be prepared by the applicant through stabilization, letting down on other proper storage and disposal methods. Sixty-three, no use of hydrants on site or on adjacent roads off-site is allowed for construction use. A hydrant may be available at the water treatment clinic for construction use during long water ban times. Sixty-six, in an effort to reduce noise levels, the applicant shall keep all equipment that emanates sounds from structures or site making proper working order to regular tanks required prior to the issued issuance of occupancy permits. Sixty-seven, no certification of occupancy shall be issued until the planning board and building commissioner are satisfied that the building, driveway, parking area, and installation of necessary utilities is in full compliance with approved plans and the site plan review and special permit. Sixty-eight, prior to application for certificate of occupancy, a copy of the contract for inspections and maintenance of the stormwater system for the operation and maintenance plan shall be provided to the planning office administration. Sixty-nine, all time periods referenced in this document for completion of additions shall be told in case any deals are taken. Seventy, this site plan review shall run with the land and shall be void if it is not recorded at the registry deeds within one hundred twenty days of expiration of the appeal period or such extension of that time period granted by the planning board following approval of the special permit. The applicant shall provide proof the special permit was reported to the planning board. Seventy-one, the planning board may at its discretion waive or modify conditions of this site plan review at a due call meeting of the board if the board determines that such waiver or modification is insignificant and does not materially inadvertently affect the purpose of this special permit decision artist in otherwise warranted. Seventy-two, the site plan review shall last within two years from the date of its issuance unless substantial use of construction has commenced prior to that time reports of past general laws, kept forty-eight, section nine. Seventy-three, all plan sheets of the site plan review shall be deployed at the registry deeds. Seventy-four, all construction work shall be done according to plans. Failure to comply with any condition of this permit shall cause it to be deemed invalid. Seventy-five, any condition contained herein that very important plan supersede the plan of the year. Amen. Discussion?
Yeah, I just had to take out all references to special permit. Okay. The special permit has changed to site plan. Okay. Administration. There's several of ours on the left side.
Second amendment?
Oh, this is a public hearing.
Karen, was there something on the snow storage?
Yes, there. What did you want to know?
Oh, I saw it on thirty. Dave was supposed to put that one in the right, the left fence.
Snow storage is on the far side of the site.
Yeah.
That that's where you want it?
Yeah.
Okay, so then.
But I didn't know what's in it.
It's on the plan, so I'll just take out this other second.
Yeah.
So you're taking out the reference prior?
Yeah, prior, it is on, it's on the way far side of the site.
Yeah, the second amendment.
So, Peter.
I, I.
Mr. Lawson, you have the books. There you go.
Oh, that's awesome. Thank you all so much.
When things come to those who wait.
Yeah.
Just commit these seventy-three items.
To memory of the tested voice.
You did a good job reading. Both of you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Lawson, for your luck.
Yeah, thank you so much.
I'll be getting this ready, file the town card, go get a copy, and then.
Yeah, okay, all right. Well, you all have a good night.
You too.
I appreciate everything. You ever need a plumber? I'll give you an A or something. I don't know what you're doing. Oh, okay. That would be the help. Thanks, Karen.
It's not too much after a bit.
That's all.
Hey, we're on the five minutes.
Good morning. Hey, Dave. What's up?
So, eight fifty. Yeah, we came out here.
This is.
How is it?
Next, move on to your next thing.
Sure. It's not a public hearing. Not a public hearing, so you can just go right ahead.
It's just a discussion about sharing reduction.
Mm-hmm.
It's a sharing reduction and extension of time to complete subdivision at Curtis Estates. Mr. Sharon, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here.
Is this Paul on here? Is he on? Is he on here?
I'm on Zoom.
Hi there, did I just hear that this was the public hearing portion, or am I mistaken?
The public hearing is the what, Mr. Sharon?
The open section, please and thank you.
We're not, we're not taking public comment yet, we'll, we'll let you know.
All right, thank you, I'll mute myself.
Thank you. How did you get on?
Okay, Mr. Maravita, what's going on?
Okay, thank you, for the record, my name is Paul Nervio. Ross is your company representing Wellbe Builders this evening. Paul Sharon is going to be joining the meeting by Zoom. That may be him. I sent the board a letter on January nineteenth of this year, and it was in response to a site visit. Your peer review engineer, Peter Calmore, made of the subdivision, and he prepared a list of items of work that were to be completed. In my letter to the board on the nineteenth, I took his letter from November twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, which was a summary of remaining items of work to be completed. Some of those items were completed and some weren't. The items that were not completed, I listed in my letter to the board with my estimated cost to finish those items. We did submit the ASML plan to you. Peter has reviewed that. Get some items of work that is looking to be added to the plan between the little view. We don't have an issue with that, but I guess the thing that's probably of great importance is the estimate he came up with, there's somebody had another work that needed to be completed. He provided the board with an estimate of what he made work to be forty-seven thousand dollars, forty-seven thousand sixty-four dollars. That then included a twenty percent markup for contingency involved. Some portions I have with his list is one of the items he has there is factory boughs. Peter wants to see those marked on the ground on our ASML plan, shows them all to be set. We show them on the plan. But he's included the price here is all they have and then installed. That's like sixty-three hundred dollars.
Couldn't find the box.
Pardon?
He couldn't find the box.
Well, did he walk around with the torch?
Yeah, he did.
I mean, some were right at the surface.
Well, he couldn't find all of the box.
The point I'm making is that the boughs are in, we can mark those for him. Usually what we do is to paint them up, but I'm not inclined to do that because most of them are in the front yards of the homeowners. The other thing is, when we did the ASML, we located all the trees that were on the subdivision plan, and they're all in. There's one tree by stormwater basin floor, it's a pine tree about four or five feet tall that has to be replaced, is dead, but there's ten other trees that he's saying have to be installed. We don't know where those trees are, when we did them, when we located them, the trees all had leaves on them. So I'm in the losses, so why those trees are still in the tub. It's mainly the boughs and the trees at this point. The catch station of the drain manhole work not cleaned this week. I got the invoice from the contractor, he also mentioned that these structures and the lines to and from them were in very good condition. Well, I'll pass that information after you. The other portions I have is there's some aluna seed that needs to be done. Some of it is in front of the wall along Envoy Road, the seed was put in, but in the grass group, but the leaves are collected up against the wall and are grinding on the grass. Yeah, that'll, that'll be replaced in the spring, as soon as the growing season allows. Also, at the house on Lot Twelve, there's this artificial rock that's on the homeowner's lawn. We were able to turn it over. There's some cable there, it looks like TV cable. We'll show that on the plan as a utility. I don't know why the utility company put it there, why they covered with a rock. They did, you know, I guess it is what it is. And the boughs will mark those out so Peter can see them. I think at this point, the owner is asking that he, that the board vote to reduce his bond. Why, I believe it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And your peer review engineer showing a cost of forty-seven thousand. I suggested in the letter that the board reduce the bond to fifty thousand dollars to cover the items in his letter. Again, some of these items have been completed. And as I said, the boughs and the trees. The forcing bank system, we don't have a problem leaving those numbers in there for now. Hopefully in the spring when he can we see these areas that are in Peter's letter, the items of work could be completed at that point.
That's what you told me the last time you were here.
Pardon?
That's what you said the last time you were here.
Um, okay.
Okay, wait, okay, so. We're not ready for the motion.
I don't want to do a motion, I want to say something.
Okay. All right, so the only other thing that we noticed on a site visit this, this week is the fire hydrants have not been painted.
Well, the fire hydrant has been fixed.
It hasn't been painted.
Painted?
Yeah.
We didn't know it had to be.
Yeah. We, we sent an email of that a long time ago. The fire hydrants have to be painted with the town colors prior to the subdivision being complete.
I wasn't aware of that. Where's the town color?
Apparently neither was the fire chief.
Silver tops and yellow base. DPW has the standard specification.
Okay.
Um, man. The stone wall, and according to the, some of the rocks are loose and need to be reattached, as it were. And also behind the stone wall, this, the debris from the time that it fell over. And all that stuff needs to be taken out and gotten rid of.
Okay.
In other words, that all has to be cleaned up.
Sorry, been done, it was done yesterday.
Okay. Well, is the board satisfied with how the site, the stone wall was remedied?
No.
Where, where the big tree is?
No.
That's what the board has to decide.
They should have been granite something put on either side rather than it half.
That's the way it just goes everywhere.
Right. I mean, it looks, it has to look deliberate, not haphazard.
Are you talking about the tree that went to the entrance?
Yes.
In the stone wall?
Yes.
Yeah, the wall was cut back so the tree can grow. No, without breaking the wall down. The tree's gonna grow.
I know, but finish the sides of the wall.
The sides of the wall?
So you know, it comes if it breaks down, the tree is in the middle, all right? Because I think the wall and the tree were mismatched, I'm gonna say. It doesn't look very nice.
Yeah, it does look finished.
Right.
That whole left area actually looks a little more finished, a little rough as between the the, nice walk on the sidewalk, nice foot on the sidewalk, fellas, nice. So Karen?
I mean, it's happened by the heart, I engineer, we went out there and we did a site visit. This is what he found, and so I wrote a draft motion for his number. If you want to go and round it up to fifty thousand, that's for the board to decide.
For me.
Yeah, let's round it up.
Round it up to fifty thousand, and the last time you were here, the foundation is not gonna be here. I asked for the number of the district attorney very quickly, saying, "The foundation is not gonna come back." And you'd say, "I promise," and here you are. So, do we have a draft in date on this, Karen?
Well, they are asking for the subdivision to be extended out to October first, twenty twenty-four, because you can't.
Extend the growing season plus?
That's, that's a full growing season. You can't be, you can't be planting the seed now in front of the wall. Wall, and you shouldn't be painting the hydrants now either.
And the seeds on the bases now either, right?
This is, basically, they're asking to extend it out until October first so that they can do fix, fix the ceiling, et cetera, in the proper growing season time. I, I would recommend that you allow them to do it within the proper growing season time. If you think October first was too much, well, you know.
Karen, you better make sure it goes through the sun.
Yes, I agree with you.
Sure, but I would like to make a struggle, and we found it at thirty thousand dollars.
I will, to accept Paul Mayor View's request on behalf of Curtis Estates, Wellbe Builders, Nine and Envoy Road LLC, involve sharing to reduce the amount of the bond, number six one five nine nine three zero seven zero, issued by United States Fire Insurance Company, being held for the Curtis Estates, Mexico Open Space, definitive subdivision project by the planning board from two hundred fifty. by the Planning Board, from two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars for completion of the project. The current bond is to remain ineffective until the new bond is provided to the town planner. The date of issuance is the date of the bond, not the vote of the Planning Board. My second is.
Who decided?
No, just for you.
It's what I was.
So I would like to inject into this motion the notion that the remaining bond will, will only be released at the completion of the project. At the full completion. We're not going to do half again and half again.
So for full completion of the project?
Yeah.
Remaining bond will only be released at the full completion of the project.
Right.
My second is.
Oh, Peter?
Bye.
Okay. I'm going to endorse.
No, I, right, well, there you go.
That'd be good, courtesy of that. Move to extend the time for completion of the flexible open space definitive subdivision for Curtis Estates at Ninety and Envoy Road until October one, twenty twenty-four, from the previous extension date of four twelve twenty-four, in accordance with the applicant's request at condition six of the subdivision certificate of action dated two twenty twenty eighteen. The applicant indicates additional seeding needs to be done in the spring at the length of full growing season for completion of the requirements.
And let's add Anne for painting with the fires.
And we will have the rocks and et cetera. Rocking. Fix the stone wall. Is there a second?
Second is many?
Seven.
Oh, Peter?
Hi, hi, hi.
Okay, let's get to work.
Chao, chao. Oh, I thought you retired.
Pardon?
I thought you'd be tired, didn't you retire?
I am retired.
No, no.
He is, um.
I think that was Paul.
He's always been here.
It hasn't worked very well for me.
No.
Okay.
Thank you, we'll start the seeding in April, and we'll be out of your hair.
Okay.
I'm gonna hold you for a day.
No.
For eight one five, yeah.
Yeah. Um, Mr. Sullivan is on line.
I want Mr. Maravito to get stuck together and. Are you dating Mr. Maravito?
Who's presenting the A and R for three twenty-two, Chief Justice Cushing Highway.
Wait on, I'm trying to unmute Walter.
While you've been involved with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Walter Sullivan's.
Oh.
On the Zoom meeting, and this is Walter.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm here, Walter Sullivan, also representing Mr. Kumar.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Maravito.
Okay, thank you. We, we submitted the plan for three twenty-two, Chief Justice Cushing Highway. Which shows is the property owned by the applicant, Seth Kumar. And he will, will propose him to do is we'll rest in the board to like what's the plan that shows property that is divided into two separate lots, namely Lot One and Lot Two. Lot Two is a fully compliant lot as far as lot frontage and lot went through in the existing structure. And Lot One was the subject of an application to the ZRPO appeals. The ground decision was recorded with the town clerk on May twenty-fifth. That, that decision allowed the creation of Lot One shown on the plan that has three existing structures on it. There's two small cottages and an existing garage, and a shed to the rear of the garage. The property served by a pre-existing common driveway coming out from Route three A, shown on the plan. And the access to the lots is also a hammerhead that was divided up at the very end of the driveway in front of the garage. And we did that after we met with Mark Donovan of the Fire Department. He suggested that the existing driveway, which, which needs to be repaid, that we widen it to sixteen feet and a few locations shown on the plan. He, he said the driveway was adequate, but he suggested we make these improvements to prevent a repaid so we have a full sixteen-foot wide paved driveway from Route three A all the way up to the.
I don't think we're really discussing the side of the driveway at this point, right?
Right.
We're not endorsing driveway modifications of any kind.
Karen, I have a question, so why don't you go to Zoe for maybe one hour?
Pardon?
Yeah, this was an eighty-one hour request from Zoe, why didn't you go to Zoe if you did not come to the wedding?
I, I can respond to that, I think, if that's helpful, Ms. Sharon. So we, we needed to get a finding that by dividing the land, that we weren't making it more non-conforming. So we decided to get that first, rather than come to the planning board and spend that time at expense of, you know, having a plan that was suitable for endorsement. So that's why we did it. The passage of time was really through miscommunication with our client. We had planned to do this virtually simultaneously. After we got the finding under forty-eight, section six and six ten point three of the situated zoning bylaw from the zoning board, our client started pursuing other options for the property. And neither Paul nor I had spoken to him for quite a while, and he went and sought a building permit from Mr. Vogel, and of course, Mr. Vogel properly told him, you have to divide the lots. So that's why he reached back out to us, and we said, yeah, that's right. You know, we, we didn't do, we didn't go back to the planning board, that's what we have to do. So that's, that's the procedure we chose to do, because we just thought we need to get a finding that by dividing the lot essentially in the middle with four structures on it, we're not making it more non-conforming.
We could agree if you just agree.
That's right. Okay. It, it, now, maybe I'm forgetting. Didn't we, at a recent town meeting, have some type of discussion go along with? Didn't, didn't we talk about?
All right, so the planning board endorses plans for access in front of.
Right.
You can, you put your stamp on a plan that says you don't, you don't determine if it conforms to zoning.
All right.
So this has access. Lot two is a hundred percent compliant. Lot one does not have the required frontage. But Town Council has appined, since the ZDA approved it, you need to endorse the plan.
All right, so we get it, we get it, we get it, we're gonna call it that.
That, that's.
Okay.
Again, it's fully endorsement for access.
Yeah, right, and you're not.
Doesn't have anything to do with the size of the driveway.
No, and you're not determining if the lots comply with zoning.
But you take that.
Right, you're not determining.
And we're ready lies for someone.
That's all, so we got time to, you give a, a razor.
And, okay. I move to endorse this equivalent subdivision control law not required of planted land with a town's to mass, three twenty-two Chief Justice Cushing Highway prepared by Ross Engineering Company and Brady Consulting LLC for applicant owner, Seth Hill Kumar, trustee dated January nineteen, twenty twenty-four, as one who showed on the plan and frontage of at least the distance presently required on the situated zoning bylaw on the countryway, Chief Justice Cushing Highway.
Oh, Peter?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
But we have all business movements, correspondence in the Australia.
Yeah.
And approve on, we send you, Mr. Maravito, that's just.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you send me email, I don't know, just talk about problems on Monday? Or do you want me to come on Monday? Not sometime on Monday.
No, that's fine.
Yeah. Yeah, I will absolutely come leave. How can we get?
Okay, we have a couple of minutes.
Hang on, I'm getting organized here, I can drive up. I move to approve the meeting minutes from January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Second?
Oh, Peter?
Hi.
And we got, Joe, we got.
I will to approve requisition of one thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents, Chesney Consulting for peer review services for nineteen four place, four hundred and thirty-five dollars to Chesney Consulting for peer review services for sixty-one driftway, five hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents to Chesney Consulting for peer review services for thirty-three driftways slash seven McDonald Terrace for three hundred and sixty-two fifty-three Chesney Consulting peer review services for the residential compound on Country Way, and for eighteen hundred dollars to our corporation for peer review services for Curtis Estates.
Second? Oh, Peter?
Hi.
But we as long, um, we got a little messed up with the bylaw review, so I don't really know too many on here. I guess we'll have another, we had a very great fifth. Let's go back up in the air, dig in, ready for town meeting, and that's all I know so far, if there's anything else. Actually, you look like a thing?
Uh, we've got a meeting Monday night, had no developments since the last meeting.
Okay, yeah. Unfortunately, I couldn't zoom into the last CPC meeting, but having read the minutes, which we'll call it. People law has been withdrawn for the town being, so we'll see where that goes. And then we have a meeting Monday night, and I guess we're talking about Norwell and CPC. I don't know, I'll lock mine down when I get there.
Okay, okay, okay.
That's all I get.
And that's three as long. So we have two other decisions for the election. Mr. Badaba chose not to to re-miss the speak. So we are looking for two people, come and help us write some public policy, write us down. And be engaged, be a boy.
Right.
Thank you. Uh, Karen, anything you want to tell us?
No.
I, I have a. What's happening with seven driftway?
Nothing's coming along.
I don't know, he claims that he is going to be starting something soon. He was in last, he was in sometime last month, and he said he paid the the back taxes, not, not the current taxes, he paid all the back taxes.
Got you, love.
So it didn't go into tax title, but I, I don't know what's, you know.
Someone who's been.
Not too quick, just in here.
Oh, I think it's longer than that.
No, no, tell me then.
We can't.
We can't, we, we're keeping tabs on it.
We talked for a long time before.
We're keeping close tabs on it.
Yeah, it does.
It's simple forever.
Karen?
Uh, we, we're gonna have, next time, we have eight seventeen Country Way plan endorsement for sixty-one new driftway and the reports to town meeting in March, we have, we're gonna have Laurel with lots one and two for common driver Stormwater. We are going to be seeing tennis courts for Stormwater. So we're boiling, we're busy, huh?
Yeah. And we'll. Us school, right?
Did you give your presentation?
No, I have Tuesday night.
Tuesday.
We'll pull the to here.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Oh, Peter?
Hi.
Thank you.